Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, January 14th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brinson, Galanter, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Laban, Msakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Msakowski moves and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
MsGrul moves and MsZine seconds. And before proceeding with the matters listed on today's agenda, this being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, as is customary, we have our salutes to the flag scheduled. Let me ask the public and members of the council to please stand. And ladies and gentlemen, let me ask the new Assistant President Pro Tem of the Los Angeles City Council, Mr. Eric Garcetti, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, first item on today's agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items one and two are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items one and two now before us. Public hearings haven't been held. Are there members wishing to call either of these matters special? Item number one, item number two, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through fifteen are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I have cards on item number fifteen. Let's call that matter special. On the balance of the items, I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items three through fourteen. Items three through fourteen, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have requests to continue item number fourteen?
Yes, I believe it's the request to continue that matter for one day.
Okay. Members, there's a request to continue item number fourteen for one day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item fourteen is continued to tomorrow. Item fifteen called special. Items three through thirteen now remaining. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Garcetti calls item number ten special. So the roll is open on items three through thirteen with the exception of number ten. Roll is open. Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through fifteen are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I have cards on item number fifteen. Let's call that matter special. On the balance of the items, I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items three through fourteen. Items three through fourteen, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have requests to continue item number fourteen?
Yes, I believe it's the request to continue that matter for one day.
Okay. Members, there's a request to continue item number fourteen for one day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item fourteen is continued to tomorrow. Item fifteen called special. Items three through thirteen now remaining. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Garcetti calls item number ten special. So the roll is open on items three through thirteen with the exception of number ten. Roll is open. Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through fifteen are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I have cards on item number fifteen. Let's call that matter special. On the balance of the items, I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items three through fourteen. Items three through fourteen, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have requests to continue item number fourteen?
Yes, I believe it's the request to continue that matter for one day.
Okay. Members, there's a request to continue item number fourteen for one day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item fourteen is continued to tomorrow. Item fifteen called special. Items three through thirteen now remaining. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Garcetti calls item number ten special. So the roll is open on items three through thirteen with the exception of number ten. Roll is open. Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Items three and four being ordinances. Carry over for a second reading.
Next on the agenda, Mr. President, going back to the items, called special. Item number ten was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item number ten.
It's up special. It's up special. It was for Mr. Holden. Do you recognize it's right now? Can we keep it on the table, please?
Okay. Item number ten was called special by Mr. Garcetti on behalf of Mr. Holden, who has yet to arrive. Let's hold this on the desk. Proceeds to the next item.
The next matter would be item number fifteen.
Item number fifteen now before us. And we understand there's several members of the public wishing to address the council. I have a stack here of about fifty to sixty cards. So, members of the council, I'll ask for your patience and your attention here. Let's proceed now to public comment. I'm going to begin to read out the names of the people who have submitted speaker cards. I'd ask you to come up three, four, five at a time and line up behind the podium. Time is of the essence here, so we will ask for your brevity and to not be too repetitive of comments that have been made earlier. Mr. Laban?
I just read my notes. I just want to add number ten special. Instead of hold it on the desk, call it special when it comes. Please, thank you.
Okay. So, members of the public understand, I'm going to read off batches of names. I'll ask you to come up three, four, five at a time, line up behind the podium. Your brevity and direct comments would be most appreciated. Let's begin by hearing from Mr. Jamie Wilson, followed by Pamley Foster Newsom, Sherry Lynn Lopez, and Vera Orbin. Please come forward at this time.
I'm Jamie Wilson. I'm president of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce and the San Pedro Business Improvement District. Address is 390 West 7th Street in San Pedro. I'm here to ask the City Council to exert jurisdiction over this matter. We believe it's a very important issue that should have been presented to both the neighborhood councils and the local community for their input prior to any decisions being made. We think policies in the city of Los Angeles should be adapted to the different needs of the various communities and the business improvement districts, and we think this whole matter should be reviewed in detail. Thank you very much.
Ms. Foster Newsom?
I'm here representing the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. The president is Mr. Howard Ullern. This letter states, "I am writing in capacity as the president of the Neighborhood Council regarding this referred decision. I am highly critical of the fact that such a critical piece of policy could be shoved through without first asking for input from the Neighborhood Councils. You've brought us to this world to bring government closer to the people and thereby end the alienation that most voters feel from City Hall. The Police Commission decision exemplifies this alienating process. I ask that you support Ms. Han's motion calling for a legislative veto of the Commission's decision. That will enable you to give further study to this matter, including receiving input from Neighborhood Councils." Thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
My name is Vera Orbin, and I'm a resident, and I have a burglar alarm, and I'm opposing this proposal. The alarm that I have is breaks, and they sent me a notice that it said that an ordinance like similar to this was passed in December 2000 in Salt Lake City, Utah. And since there -- thank you. Since then, their own statistics show that 21% increase in residential burglaries have escalated, a 54% increase in commercial, and a 37% increase in overall crime rate. The alarm itself that are installed in the homes --
Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, January 14th, 2003. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brinson Galanter, Garcetti, Gruel, Han, Holden, Laban, Msakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Msakowski moves and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves and Ms. Stein seconds. And before proceeding with the matters listed on today's agenda, this being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, as is customary, we have our salutes to the flag scheduled. Let me ask the public and members of the council to please stand. And ladies and gentlemen, let me ask the new Assistant President Pro Tem of the Los Angeles City Council, Mr. Eric Garcetti, to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Place your hand over your heart. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, first item on today's agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, Mr. President, items one and two are items for which public hearings have been held.
Items one and two now before us. Public hearings haven't been held. Are there members wishing to call either of these matters special? Item number one, item number two, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those matters are approved. Next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, items three through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
I have cards on item number 15. Let's call that matter special. On the balance of the items, I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials, items three through 14. Items three through 14, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have requests to continue item number 14?
Yes, I believe it's the request to continue that matter for one day.
Okay. Members, there's a request to continue item number 14 for one day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item 14 is continued to tomorrow. Item 15 called special. Items three through 13 now remaining. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Mr. Garcetti calls item number 10 special. So the roll is open on items three through 13 with the exception of number 10. Roll is open. Madam Clerk, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Items three and four being ordinances. Carry over for a second reading.
Next on the agenda, Mr. President, going back to the items called special. Item number 10 was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti, item number 10.
It's up special. It's up special. It was for Mr. Holden. Do you recognize it right now? Can we keep it on the table, please?
Okay, item number 10 was called special by Mr. Garcetti on behalf of Mr. Holden, who has yet to arrive. Let's hold this on the desk. Proceeds to the next item.
The next matter would be item number 15.
Item number 15 now before us, and we understand there's several members of the public wishing to address the council. I have a stack here of about 50 to 60 cards. So, members of the council, I'll ask for your patience and your attention here. Let's proceed now to public comment. I'm going to begin to read out the names of the people who have submitted speaker cards. I'd ask you to come up, three, four, five at a time, and line up behind the podium. Time is of the essence here, so we will ask for your brevity and to not be too repetitive of comments that have been made earlier. Mr. Laban?
I just read my notes. I just want to add number 10 special. Instead of hold it on the desk, call it special when it comes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so, members of the public, understand, I'm going to read off batches of names. I'll ask you to come up, three, four, five at a time, line up behind the podium. Your brevity and direct comments would be most appreciated. Let's begin by hearing from Mr. Jamie Wilson, followed by Pamley Foster Newsom, Sherry Lynn Lopez, and Vera Orbin. Please come forward at this time.
I'm president of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce and the San Pedro Business Improvement District. Address is 390 West 7th Street in San Pedro. I'm here to ask the city council to exert jurisdiction over this matter. We believe it's a very important issue that should have been presented to both the neighborhood councils and the local community for their input prior to any decisions being made. We think policies in the city of Los Angeles should be adapted to the different needs of the various communities and the business improvement districts, and we think this whole matter should be reviewed in detail. Thank you very much.
Ms. Foster Newsom?
I'm here representing the Central San Pedro Neighborhood Council. The president is Mr. Howard Ullern. This letter states, "I am writing in capacity as the president of the Neighborhood Council regarding this referred decision. I am highly critical of the fact that such a critical piece of policy could be shoved through without first asking for input from the Neighborhood Councils. You've brought us to this world to bring government closer to the people and thereby end the alienation that most voters feel from City Hall. The Police Commission decision exemplifies this alienating process. I ask that you support Ms. Han's motion calling for a legislative veto of the Commission's decision. That will enable you to give further study to this matter, including receiving input from Neighborhood Councils." Thank you.
Ms. Lopez?
My name is Vera Orbin, and I'm a resident, and I have a burglar alarm, and I'm opposing this proposal. The alarm that I have is breaks, and they sent me a notice that it said that an ordinance like similar to this was passed in December 2000 in Salt Lake City, Utah. And since there... Thank you. Since then, their own statistics show that 21% increase in residential burglaries have escalated, a 54% increase in commercial, and a 37% increase in overall crime rate. The alarm itself that are installed in the homes has already raised to a 1,000% increase. I would like for you to consider possibly a raise in fee from $30 to $50 for the permit and have one free false alarm per year, $100 fine each for the next three false alarms. In addition, anyone having more than three, not including the free ones, should be fined $200 for additional false alarms. Abusers should be facing cancellation of their own permit, and the Police Commission can decide who is considered abused. I don't believe that it should blanket everybody to be covered, you know, that we should all suffer for the abusers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vera Orbin. Ms. Vera Orbin, followed by Ms. Mary Hopson, George Page, and Mark Goffstein.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sherry Lopez. I am a vice president of NHC Insurance Services. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, Harbor City Chamber of Commerce, South Bay Latino Chamber of Commerce, and also a member of the Central Neighborhood Council of San Pedro. My concern this morning is with the message that the police department has sent out, or excuse me, the Police Commission has sent out, in regards to not responding to alarms. As a member of the Central Neighborhood Council, these items, in my opinion, from a business and a neighborhood standpoint, have not been submitted to us and are, more importantly, the message that we're sending out to the business owners of the city and who have not had an opportunity to give their input. Because of the situation in the insurance industry especially, crime, as you know, is very right on the top of insurance companies' minds. If you do not allow us to make proper decisions, you have now given business owners, and especially the type that I represent, which are mostly women-owned and minority-owned businesses, the possibility of not being able to get theft insurance on their business and/or rising cost, or in some cases, no availability. It is mostly a requirement, and the reason it's a requirement is that the police will respond to a central station alarm. So I highly recommend that you give it back to the Neighborhood Councils and the city's council recommends that they go back and look at this issue again and not make a hasty decision, I fear, for many of our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. I'm George Page. I'm here to represent my godmom, who's senior citizen and homeowner in Los Angeles here. I'd like to express the disbelief and inconsideration the Commission would have with passing this without contacting the public and having them be aware of it. Being a citizen, senior citizen, my godmom, she feels unsafe in her home. I've had recently a fence bill that was too high and been penalized for it, so she would feel safe, and we're likely to bring this back before the Commission so that, and the city council to reconsider the senior citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Next, Mr. Goffstein, Mark... Are you Mark Goffstein, sir? Are you Mr. Goffstein?
Yes, sir.
Great. Go ahead, Mr. Goff.
Good morning, council members. I am here this morning at the request of my partner, Mr. Mark Dunaway, who lives at 6957 Mataleja Avenue in Van Nuys. I'm here this morning because he was unable to attend, and I'm here this morning to support Councilmember Han's proposal this morning to have the city council assert jurisdiction over this matter, and I'm here to put a personal spin on this. Mr. Dunaway's home this past October was burglarized, in the middle of the day, in broad daylight. Very shortly afterwards, he had an alarm system put into his house at significant cost to him, but the reason he did this was he wanted to feel safer because at the time his house was robbed, there were no eyewitnesses to this. Nearly $5,000 were taken out of the house, including several pieces of electronic items and several pieces of jewelry. The reason why he had the alarm put in is because he wanted to know that should he not be at home, the alarm goes off, the police would naturally respond, because after all, that's what they do. However, with this proposal, there's no longer a feeling of safety in that household because, you know, this proposal says that you need eyewitness corroboration that a crime's going on. Well, members of the council, there were no eyewitnesses to this crime, and even if there were, time and time again, eyewitnesses witnessed the robbers leaving the house already with the merchandise, too late for the police to do anything. Now, I have many acquaintances in the city of Salt Lake City. They will argue that the statistics that come from the Salt Lake Police Department are bogus. I agree with them. I have a tendency to trust their observations and their judgments. And so, in a city like Los Angeles, which is considerably larger, with significantly stretched, more stretched resources, a proposal like this is going to be disastrous for the citizens and for the businesses that have alarm systems. I urge you to take this item under your jurisdiction and have public hearings with adequate notification. I urge you to look for ways to deal with false alarms that are not penalizing the rest of us who have alarms, and I look for you to actually work to decrease crime in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, if we can have Robert Bonfiglio, Mr. Robert Bonfiglio, to be followed by Tim Westfall. Mr. Bonfiglio here? And Robert McKay will be the next speaker after that.
I'm Robert Bonfiglio, homeowner, resident of Van Nuys. I am in favor of motion 15. In my neighborhood, we have many elderly people. God forbid something happens, these people can't get to a phone. What happens? They lay there. The threat of home invasions is very scary to most people. So picture someone with a gun to your head and you're not able to answer the phone. I, you know, it's, it just seems total lunacy to me to do what the Police Commission's often, you know, saying they want to do. Thank you.
Tim Westfall?
Good morning. My name is Robert McCoy. I'm the president of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, and I'm a business manager in the city of Wilmington. I'm surprised that the Police Commission could make this decision, and I'm shocked that they could do it without public hearings beforehand. Our insurance rates have risen dramatically since September 11th. I think without the assurance that the police will respond in case of a burglary, they will continue to increase. It makes it more and more difficult to do business in the city. It may force other businesses to reconsider their options to move here. In the past, having an alarm system on your business or your residence was a deterrent. Unfortunately, if this stands, it'll be an invitation for burglars to pick on us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Westfall here, Tim Westfall? Okay, we'll go to the next speaker then. Ray Patricio from San Pedro Northwest Neighborhood Council, to be followed by Keith Henry.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to speak against this thing, and like everybody else, it's just about said everything, and I'm going to make it simple. The bottom line, there's one bottom line in every department in LA. The reason they even passed this, the police passed this thing, was because they don't have enough people. It's so simple. Every department needs people, and we better shake up the whole system and think about the little people getting burglarized and all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henry, to be followed by Teresa Nelson.
Hi, I'm Keith Henry, a lifetime resident of Los Angeles. I'd just like to say that I believe that the Police Commission is, was getting close to the right solution but did not fully consider addressing the needs of all the stakeholders involved. And I would, I'm for this proposal because I believe it'll give the city council an opportunity to work with the Police Commission to figure out what just the optimal solution might be. I've been thinking about this quite a bit myself, and I would like to submit to the council a concept that I've developed for rapid verification of these alarms. And I have copies for you, Councilmember Han, and the other council members, and I'd like to deliver those if I can.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelson, to be followed by Tiffany Teens.
Hi, my name is Teresa Jurgens Nelson, and I'm here today in favor of Janice Han, Councilwoman's, motion to allow the council to assert their jurisdiction in capturing this policy that was passed last week by the Police Commission and allowing the Neighborhood Councils their rights under the city charter to be able to allow their members and community in open forum to be able to express their concerns and issues regarding this proposal that was already passed by the Police Commission. The one thing we have to keep in mind is that alarms are not just for burglaries. In my case, I am a heart patient with congenital heart failure. My system also acts, being that I'm a single woman living alone, as a means of being able, if I have an attack with my heart, I can use my alarm system to alert the police to get someone out there. Otherwise, you might as well prepare my funeral. So, also, alarm systems, again, don't just deal with burglaries, they also deal with the health and safety and security of all of those who have put them in place for these reasons. And I do ask you to please seriously take this into your hands and take the jurisdiction to allow the Neighborhood Councils to deliberate and for you guys to get the support that you should have from your constituents. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jurgens Nelson. Our next speaker is Tiffany Teens. We have Tiffany Teens here, not Jack Podolsky. Jack Podolsky? Coming right there. Thank you. To be followed by Patrick Wilson. Patrick Wilson will come forward too.
As soon as I stepped into this chamber, they started on the pledge of allegiance for liberty and justice for all. Each one of us made that commitment when we came here. We're not doing it by doing it this way. This is not correct. There is a problem. The Police Commission is crying out that we need to do some help here, and we have to take care of it, but not this way. People are going to die here. We can't do that. This is not a third-world city. And we can't, and anyone who doesn't object to this is helping commit something that's going to be very bad. However, we do need to address the issue of what the Police Commission is trying to do. We can't ignore them, but there's a better answer than this. This is not the answer. It scares me. And frankly, it may make a difference whether some people come to the city or not, where businesses want to be or not, because at any moment, they can decide, "We don't want to do businesses either." Without police protection, and a sense of it, you're unsafe. Just the sense of it is wrong. It's the wrong direction. We're not serving the public here when we do it this way. There are better solutions than this. There must be responses, there must be better responses. This is the wrong direction. There's technology, there's ability, there's all kinds of things we can do. We are not helpless. And if someone says that it's because there's a few million-dollar difference, that can't be right either. We have to take care of ourselves. We're going the wrong direction over here. We shouldn't even have a conversation about not taking care of our public and providing police protection. Should be another conversation, how we can do it better. This is the wrong way to go about a problem we have. Please, take care of this. I don't want someone, even a single person, to die or be hurt because we've done this wrong. There's ways of doing this. Let's go for the resolution. Let's take care of things. I'm sorry if I'm not passionate about this.
Thank you, Mr. Podolsky. Appreciate it. Patrick Wilson, to be followed by Wilma Haynes, to be followed by Wilma Haynes, please.
Good morning, members of the council. I come to you this morning as president and owner of a small transportation company in Wilmington, Fast Lane Transportation. I'm also representing the Wilmington Neighborhood Council as one of the executive board members. On Christmas Eve 2002, our business was burglarized. Our first line of defense, our fence was breached. Our second line of defense, a security guard had not yet made it to his post. Our third line of defense, steel barred windows were severely damaged. Had the burglars succeeded in breaking through the window bars, our only remaining line of defense against intrusion would have been our alarm, which emits a siren and also alerts our security company. Being unable to make contact within our office to verify a false alarm, they would have contacted the police department to respond. Due to our remote geographic location, it is unlikely that anyone except the burglars would have even heard the alarm to be able to verify a burglary in progress. If the police department did not respond to these types of requests as a matter of policy, I can assure you that even the burglars would have known that they would have had the entire Christmas holiday to clean us out at their leisure. I would also like to address a more fundamental issue of fairness within our political process. The Neighborhood Council program was established in part to encourage participation from Neighborhood stakeholders and to provide a forum to deliberate, debate, and ultimately advise our positions to our elected officials and appointed representatives, particularly on quality of life issues. As an executive board member of the first certified Neighborhood Council, I have a desire and an obligation to subscribe to the early notification system for the city council and city departments, boards, and commissions. The action of the Police Commission caught me and the other members of our governing board totally by surprise. With no early warning system available for Police Commission meeting agendas, we were deprived of the ability to even consider the ramifications of the no-response policy for alarms before it was enacted. I urge you to support Councilwoman Han and Councilwoman Gruel's motion for the city council to take over jurisdiction of this matter for reconsideration. At least then, the Neighborhood Councils would have an opportunity to weigh in on an important issue that is so important to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Haynes, Wilma Haynes, to be followed by Kathy Beauregard-Covet.
As you said, my name is Wilma Haynes, and I'm here on behalf to speak on Janet Han's, the Councilwoman's, motion to take, for this council to take jurisdiction on the policy not to respond to the home burglary. And I think we, as a community person living in Watts, I believe the Neighborhood Councils deserve to have a chance to voice their concern. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kathy, and next we have Harry Davis after them.
Good morning, esteemed board members. My name is Kathy Beauregard-Covet. I live at 673 West 20th Street, San Pedro. I am the secretary of Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. I am here today to speak in favor of this motion and ask the city council to take jurisdiction over this issue. I am here representing Coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council, asking that, in the spirit of the city charter, that the Neighborhood Councils be informed of the matters which would allow us the opportunity to bring to our members for their public comment and input before these matters are officially passed. Thank you.
Thank you for the testimony. Mr. Davis, to be followed by Luis Dominguez.
Hello, my name is Harry Davis, and I'm a resident of Harbor City. We've already been to quite a few of the police meetings, and we've already been told many times of why they're not going to come and appear on any shootings, they're not going to come around any public prostitution, they're not going to come around anymore for any drug activity or gang activity, and they don't show up anymore for car accidents. Here we have PCH, which is a major street in a major city, and we had PCH tied up for an hour and a half because the police didn't show up. And now we have a new police chief who, in a new year, makes a new edict that he finds one more new thing he's not going to do for his job when they're not going to come around for burglaries anymore. I would like to ask the city council to assume jurisdiction and see if we can get the city employees of the LAPD to actually do their job. In Harbor City, we have Lamita next to us. There is a very real demarcation between an area where there is no police and where there is real police protection. We would like to also ask the city council that if we cannot get the LAPD to come that far away from LA, all the way out to the sticks where we are, that we can be assigned to LA sheriffs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dominguez, to be followed by, I think it's Robert Schmiedeke.
Thank you. My name is Luis Dominguez. I'm the president and CEO of the Harbor Free Clinic in San Pedro and the vice president of the San Pedro Chamber for Governmental Affairs. Basically, I would like to tell you what the position of the San Pedro Chamber is on this issue. I cannot, because we were not afforded the opportunity, to take a position on it. That is our major objection to this entire policy. Not giving the people of Los Angeles the opportunity to speak on something that affects the quality of life at such a basic level is an absolute travesty of democracy. We urge that you back this motion by Councilwoman Han and give us that opportunity to come and tell you what we feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Is Mr. Robert Schmedekey here, from the Harbor City Business Coalition? And next Carol Schatz and Brendan Huffman to be following.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. I am Robert Schmedekey. I represent the Harbor City Business Coalition. This is real insanity. I was, I was on the Hawthorne Police Department as a reserve for five years. I was a firearms instructor, and I worked the street. One of the primary things that burglars do is to set off alarms, leave, and see what happens next. They'll do it two or three times until you get tired of coming. I can't speak the way I feel, but I must speak to this issue. Ms. Hahn has a real good point, and I would hope, I would entreat you not to abrogate your responsibility to the citizens of this community, and do, do, please, take over where the Police Commission has dropped the ball and make us part of the loop, the citizens of this community. Insurance would be impossible for businesses. I know homeowners' insurance would go crazy. It all would. It all would. You know this is the wrong thing to do. There's got to be a better answer to cover a few false alarms. There's just got to be. The city cannot allow this to go forward, otherwise Mr. Davis has a real point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schmedekey. Next Carol Schatz, to be followed by Brendan Huffman. We have another representative from CCA.
Correct. Ms. Schatz had to step out of the room. I'm Victor Franco Jr., Vice President of Government Relations for Central City Association. Established in 1925, CCA is a 300-member business advocacy association whose members employ over 250,000 people here in the Los Angeles region. CCA supports the Hahn motion in asserting jurisdiction over the Police Commission action involving police alarms, police response to alarms. CCA is very aware of the frequent false alarm responses LAPD encounters on a daily basis at business and residential locations. These responses tie up essential police resources. Although the measure taken by the Police Commission is a noble attempt to free up officers for real crime suppression and prevention, the issue of responding to qualified alarms could result in burglaries or crimes going unanswered. CCA represents many property and business owners, particularly in the downtown center jewelry district area. These high-profile businesses rely on alarm systems for rapid response to minimize losses during theft, particularly at night. In fact, signs signifying that the mere presence of an alarm acts as a deterrent to would-be criminal activity. CCA respectfully requests that the council assert jurisdiction over this matter so that all parties and issues involved can be heard to formulate recommendations for a legitimate solution for the LAPD, alarm companies, and business and property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Next we have Brendan Huffman, to be followed by Bobby Ross and Dr. Stella Robinson.
Good morning. I'm Brendan Huffman with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today in support of this motion. When this issue was taken up by the Commission last month, the Chamber did not have an opportunity to review and study this matter, and our Public Safety Committee looks forward to an opportunity to review and provide our input to this council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huffman. Bobby Ross.
Hi, good morning. My name is Bobby Ross, and I'm here just as a homeowner. And I'd like to say that I've had a burglar alarm in my home for about five years, and I think I've had one false alarm, and I just feel like this should be taken care of to where you would deal with the people who abuse the system or where you're having the problem and not abandon the people who are trying to use their alarms properly. If it's a shortage of police officers that's the problem, is there a push to hire more police officers? I just feel like we shouldn't be abandoned for doing correctly. We're not having false alarms in our homes, and we shouldn't be punished for that. Okay? Don't abandon us.
Thank you very much. Dr. Stella Robinson, to be followed by Harvey Eisenstadt and Jay Handel.
Good morning. I'm an 80-year-old, longtime resident of Los Angeles. I would support that I'd have to find out about the Police Commission's action from the Los Angeles Times. You represent us. We depend upon you. Therefore, I'm not going to repeat the things that have been said, but I urge you to reconsider. We have elected you. We trust that you, along with the Police Commission, will come up with a viable solution. I repeat, one thing, do not punish the rest of us for the false alarms. And I must say, a rash of false alarms does not obviate the necessity for police response in so many areas. I'm active with my block club and the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. We would wish that you would check with us on important issues such as this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Harvey Eisenstadt.
Good morning. My name is Harvey Eisenstadt. I live in Chatsworth. And in this morning's newspaper, I read an interesting article about a new group of police officers that are being formed called the Gang Intervention Team, and it's going to be a unified effort of several police agencies around the Southland to address the serious problem we have with gangs and the increased rate of murder that brought us to be the murder capital of the world. And it's interesting to know that we're going to address this very serious problem of gangs while we totally ignore burglaries and robberies and ignore the wisdom of the alarm associations throughout the country that have viable solutions to the problem that presently exists. Solutions that will help reduce the number of false alarms, penalize those that are in violation of whatever solution we come up with, and bring additional revenue into the city. I'm in total support of Councilwoman Hahn and Councilwoman Gruhl's proposal, and I think it would be remiss if the city council didn't support it also. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we hear from Mr. Handel, despite a strong lobby from UCLA grads around here, we're going to take five more cards, and then the mayor of Los Angeles is going to bring in the USC football team. So we'll take a break in the testimony shortly, and we will return to the cards. There are 38 cards that are left, and we will make sure that we get to each and every one of them, and the presentation will be a short one. So Mr. Handel, to be followed by John White.
Yes, good morning. My name is Jay Handel. I'm the president of the West LA Chamber of Commerce that represents more than 1,000 businesses on the west side. I'm also a 27-year resident of Brentwood and a 17-year merchant in the Brentwood Village area. We heard about this going before the Police Commission, just the day before it actually went, which certainly led a great deal of question about the notification system. I heard about this meeting today at 6:30 last night. You know, you talk about public hearing and notification, that makes it almost impossible for people to come down here and truly be represented. But let's talk about the big issue. The big issue is non-response, or potential non-response. At the Police Commission hearing, we heard a tremendous amount from the alarm companies and associations about ways to mitigate and make things better so that it doesn't cost as much money and it isn't life-threatening. The facts are very clear. When you have a lag time in response, you will cause loss of possessions and potential loss of life. It's, that's simple. If someone is hurt and someone is dying and no one can respond, they will die. And if they die, that's on the council's hands. That's really simple, if you vote to go ahead and allow that ordinance to go through. The Commission, we sat and listened to the Commission and its president talk about all the great things his alarm system has, things that most people can't afford, and that's a really horrible way to address the public, to come back and tell them that they really need to earn more money and spend for a better alarm system. The facts are clear. The perception that the LA Police Commission has put out there was very clear when I left the Commission hearing, turned on the news radio, and heard the headline, "Los Angeles Will No Longer Respond to Burglar Alarms." It didn't say they'd respond to panic alarms, it didn't say it was only unverified alarms, it didn't say that they were only an advisory committee, that it was going to council. The headline was clear to the public. "We Will No Longer Respond to Burglar Alarms." That's what the LA Police Commission gave to the citizens of Los Angeles, and if it got picked up by the wires, to the world. Our incomes are down, it's a bad economy, this is an economic situation as well as a health and safety issue. This city's got a big enough budget deficit, and the stores and retailers that I represent continue to see decline in sales and decline in conventions that are not coming here anymore, and declines overall in our economy. You are giving them the fodder to go out and continue to denigrate what we already have as a bad economy. So I certainly support wholeheartedly, you know, the issue to take this under jurisdiction, and I would urge you to work with the alarm companies and with the associations, even though the state may have jurisdiction over a great part of it. I think the alarm people now realize that this has to be hand in hand, and this is the perfect opportunity to make it a much better situation for the city as a whole. So I implore you to take that into your jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We next, we will actually be continuing with the testimony straight through, not the UCLA lobby winning, but we will make sure the mayor, I think, is going to come afterward the testimony's finished. Mr. John White is next, to be followed by Dorothy Freeman, to be followed by Denise Weinstock. If I can call all three up, Mr. White is next. Mr. White here? Okay. Dorothy Freeman, if you'll please be next, Denise Weinstock, and then Luetta Watson.
Good morning. I'm Dorothy Freeman, and I'm in favor of Councilwoman Hahn's motion. I represent the Anthem on the Hill Association, which I'm a treasurer, also a member of the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council. We have many senior citizens residing in this area with burglar alarm system, and what the Police Commission have done is to leave an "open house" sign on all property lawn that have a burglary sign on the property. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that testimony. Denise Weinstock? And then you're next, Ms. Watson.
Hi, Denise Weinstock. I live in Mount Washington, and I support Councilwoman Hahn's motion. I've asked our council members in District 1 and District 14 to support this, and I hope that they will do so in the vote. I'm a member of a neighborhood council. I would like to see neighborhood councils be given advance notice in the future of items. In Mount Washington in 2001, we had over 30 burglaries in July and August, and our next-door neighbor's alarm went off, and someone saw them fleeing, the burglar fleeing the scene, and it wasn't until the police came that we learned that the man across the street and the man kitty-cornered and somebody else who was in the home when the burglary took place was only very fortunate that the burglar didn't realize that they had someone there, because then we could have had an injury or hostage situation. But it wasn't until the police came that the neighbors had the information available to them to see that there was a problem and that this burglar was hitting everybody's home. But it was only because one person had an alarm that the police came, and we were able to put the pieces together. So I urge you to please support Councilwoman Hahn's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Luetta Watson, to be followed by Arthur Fine and Gwendolyn Wood, if you would come forward as well. Thank you.
My name is Lou Watson, and I am the interim Vice President of Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, and I'm also the Secretary of Athens on the Hill Association. The first thing I want to say is that Salt Lake City is not LA. It seems to me that a tail is trying to wag the dog. I just want to throw that out to you. Pursuant to the city charter adopted in 2001, communities are to be notified at least 72 hours in advance on issues relating to changes in public policy. The members of Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council were not given an opportunity for input on this issue. My question to you is, are we going to enforce the current city charter or not? Or is it going to be business as usual? I, as a member of Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council and the Harbor Gateway North Neighborhood Council, are in support of jurisdiction being placed on your decision and that this issue be referred to public safety, to education, and neighborhood committees for further review. I am in support of Councilwoman Hahn's motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, and congratulations on the designations of Athens on the Hill. Congratulations on the designation of Athens on the Hill as well. Mr. Fine?
Correct. I'm Arthur Fine. I'm legal counsel. I'm here on behalf of the Greater Los Angeles Security Alarm Association to ask you to assert jurisdiction. I've submitted a letter that points out why the special order is ill-advised, both legally and factually, and there are a couple of points that I would like to highlight. First of all, the special order is not an administrative order. This is not merely the allocation of scarce resources. What this is, is legislative action that eviscerates what this council previously did in adopting the present ordinance that does not require visual verification. The present ordinance will not be complied with under this special order, and it's very important that when we come to legislative activities, that the legislative body, which is the only body that has the right to adopt legislation, consider the legislation and adopt the appropriate legislation. It is the legislative body which is responsible and responsive to its constituents and not political commissioners who are appointed to their positions. It is this body that should assert jurisdiction and determine what the appropriate legislation is to minimize false alarms. The second point I would like to make is that the studies have shown that the property owners with alarm systems are six times less likely to be burglarized. Now that, of course, is based upon alarm systems, when they're activated, being responded to. If they're not responded to, then the criminal element can completely disregard the activated alarm systems. Another important statistic is that most burglars who are apprehended are apprehended as a result of activated alarm systems. What this special order does is it not only is with respect to false alarms and not responding to false alarms, but not responding to all the true alarms. It means that essentially every true alarm that exists for a real burglary will not be responded to because it is unlikely that there will be visual verification. The whole purpose of this special order is supposedly to save expenses. I've submitted information to the effect that what you have is soft-dollar savings versus hard-dollar costs that you're going to lose out on, and that we've estimated that you're going to lose out on $3 million of false alarm fees and potentially $9 million on permit fees for alarm systems, or $12 million of hard costs versus any soft-cost savings.
If I can ask you to conclude, please, Mr. Fine?
Yes. My final point is that this order is not equitable to those who cannot afford visual verification. With respect to another municipal ordinance that affected those who could not afford making an alarm for which, an alarm response, I'm sorry, an alarm call without a charge, a Superior Court judge recently said, "To limit in any way the right to report incidents of law violation makes the right to police protection and services more available to those able to afford them, and is inherently unequal to do so," which is exactly what's happened here. You can't have more eloquent testimony than you've had here today about the importance of listening to those who are your constituents and to make a legislative decision as to what the appropriate ordinance should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fine. Next we have, and if we can try to keep our comments as precise as possible, just because we still have another 30 cards to go through, we now have Gwendolyn Wood, to be followed by Barry Kinney and Eric Priestley.
Hi, my name is Gwendolyn Wood, and I'm a representative of the Central Neighborhood Development Council in the 8th District. I'm the interim secretary at the present time. I'm here in support of Mrs. Hahn's proposal because of the fact, one, the issue we're addressing is, he's saying that when the police said that they will not be coming out to answer this alarm because they want collaboration from a witness, what if your neighbor is the one who's breaking into your home? Who's going to call? You know? If that's the only person around, who's going to call if your neighbor is breaking into your home? That's the issue that I, you know, present to you to give good consideration into her proposal, because another- Because another issue is, as a neighbor myself, I am home during the day, but I am not sitting at my window watching every one of my neighbor's houses while they're gone. And I'm sure the neighbors that I have that are home, which is few in between because the majority of my neighborhood are working people, they're not at home. So one of the things you have to consider is collaboration from who? The person, the neighbor that may be breaking into your home? What if you have a neighbor, in my case, who's not sitting at the window? I am not a nosy neighbor, so I'm not sitting at the window watching everyone's house. So for those who do get those alarm systems, they're relying on someone to respond. And I do understand the problems that the police have, but no one got together and says, "We need to address these issues as a group." The police, the insurance companies, your alarm company, and the customer, the consumer who's paying all these peoples to do this job for them. And one of the things they didn't realize was, in the process of them saying, "We're not going to answer these alarms," your insurance companies went to their books and says, "Okay, wait a minute, these premiums need to be changed." So I really ask that you give great consideration to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wood. We now have Mr. Barry Kinney, Eric Priestley, and James O'Sullivan.
Good morning. I'm Barry Kinney, citizen of Los Angeles. I'm speaking in support of the proposal by Councilwoman Hahn. I'm the vice president of ADT Security Services. We're by far the largest security provider in the city. But we're in a unique situation in that we're also the largest alarm responder. We have hundreds of alarm responders who are in cars we pay for. This ordinance, this move by the police commission would probably put money in our pockets, but I don't believe that it's necessarily in the interest, I don't believe it's in the interest at all of the citizens of Los Angeles. I don't believe it's good for our public relations in the business community, and I don't believe it's good for our citizens. I believe it's more of a public safety issue than it is just a money issue. We have hundreds of alarm responders, as I mentioned, so our situation is rather unique, but I don't believe, even though we might benefit from it financially, that it's in our best interest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Eric Priestley, and then Mr. O'Sullivan, if you'll come forward too.
Hi, everybody. I'm Eric Priestley, and I'm a neighborhood watch block captain. First of all, I'd like to support Janice Hahn's motion, and I'm asking today for, rather, consensus from all the council members to go along with me and support Janice Hahn's First of all, I'd like to say that I am really, really, I mean, the police commission should be ashamed of itself. I mean, look at this. Look at all these people. Look at these people. I mean, they should be absolutely ashamed of themselves. And I'm asking you guys today, the city council members, to act as checks and balances. Don't let them get away with this. We are moving ahead here. It's 2003, and in order to get the consent decree going, we got our neighborhood councils together. We've got to all work together in this. And that means consensus by the mayor, the police department, the police chief, the city council, and the neighborhood councils. We've all got to pull together and work together in this. And if the police commission is not on the same page, well, you know, that's too bad. Let them be back there. Leave them back there with Trent Lott and the rest of those people and all that archaic thank you. See, I'm just asking, I'm asking, I'm asking you people today for consensus, and I'm asking you to not let the police commission get away with this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. We now have James O'Sullivan, to be followed by Marjorie Maybin and James May. Maze, excuse me.
Good morning. For the record, my name is James O'Sullivan. I'm the president of the Miracle Mile Residential Association. I'm the vice chairman of the Mid-City West Community Council. City council members, stakeholders of Los Angeles, to me, this is a historic day for the city of Los Angeles. Last Tuesday, I represented both groups that I just mentioned, and I stood before the police commission, and I asked one question. Where are the neighborhood councils? Where are the stakeholders? I am so heartened by what is going on here today because I have an answer. Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn. Thank you, Councilwoman Gru. There are many of us who have spent the last year, two years, and longer putting together city councils, I mean, neighborhood councils, and quite frankly, some of us still have that little, is it going to work? You know, is it happening? You're answering that today. I have no idea, and I said last Tuesday, whether or not the right thing to do would be to go ahead with this, what the police commission recommends. The problem is, though, that the stakeholders were not included. As a member of a neighborhood council, I not only want the right to have a voice in this, but I also believe that we have a responsibility to take a look at this and to come up with some realistic solutions. I don't want anyone to think that we do not support the police commission or the new chief of police. We do, but I am so heartened and gratified by what's going on here today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you start, if I can just let people who know who are showing up right now, if you fill out against the proposal, it means you are against Ms. Hahn's proposal that's been put forward today to assert jurisdiction. For means that you are for that proposal, because we have, I think, a little bit of confusion about that. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Labusch?
Mr. President, members of council, I just want to introduce someone who's visiting from Pasadena here, and he was a student of mine, Andre Jones, fire inspector, city of Pasadena, right here. Andre Jones, welcome him to Los Angeles, all the way from Pasadena.
Welcome, Mr. Jones. Please, sir, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Dr. James Maze, and the reason that I mention the doctor part is because of post-traumatic stress disorder. I am practicing primarily in the South Central Watts community for many years, private practice as well as at the Martin Luther King Hospital. There are people existing in an environment in which there are post-traumatic stress disorders equal to any in any country in this world. The reason I mention that in particular is because of the increase in crime, and particularly violent crime, in South Central Los Angeles. People have now gone into a shell. They feel that that shell is represented by iron gates and iron windows, and those that are able to afford an alarm system have some sense of security by having an alarm system. The new chief has come in with an agenda in which he wants to cooperate with the community. Some are believing this now, and for the police commission to step forward and take away one of those security factors is paradoxical to me. Therefore, I'm saying that we support wholeheartedly our city council lady and ladies, and it is typical of those two ladies to rebel to something of this nature. But let me emphasize, to the police commission, it is time for you to enter your era of common sense. If you won't, we will for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maze. Our next three speakers, ladies and gentlemen, are Leonard Schaefer of Tarzana, Belen Eller from Cypress Park, and Princess Sykes from Watts-Wilhelbrook.
Good morning, Mr. Garcetti, members of the council. I'm Leonard Schaefer from the Tarzana Neighborhood Council Formation Committee. Tonight, barring any disasters, we will join the certified neighborhood councils of the city of Los Angeles. I'm not here today to comment on the goodness or badness of the decision made by the police commission. I would like to have an opportunity to comment on that at a later time. We have, pardon me, we have put in a lot of time and a lot of effort to form the Tarzana Neighborhood Council, a lot of personal time and effort. I would hate to see that time and effort wasted by the action of an appointed board or commission. I know I can go on the internet, and I can get the first agenda of the police commission, and I can get the first amended and the second amended and the third amended agenda of the police commission, but unfortunately, I don't have time to do that every single time the police commission or another board or commission or another city council committee has a meeting. The charter says early notification. When you're going to do something this important that affects this many people, that notification should be proactive. I was notified of this meeting by Councilwoman Hahn's office because one of her deputies knew how to get ahold of people from the neighborhood councils. It's a published list. It's not a secret. The police commission could do that also. I am asking you to assert jurisdiction so that the neighborhood councils, the representatives of the citizens of Los Angeles, have the opportunity to speak on this issue. If you agree or disagree with us, that is your prerogative. At the very least, we'd like a chance to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Belen Eller?
Hello, city council. My name is Belen Eller, and I am a member of the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. I support Janice Hahn and the councilperson Gru. I am disappointed the police commissioners did not share in dialogue regarding burglar alarms with the neighborhood councils. We don't know if the decision to no longer respond to burglar alarms is a good idea or a bad idea, but neighborhood councils still need to be part of all discussions concerning public safety, or next time the police commissioners may decide they no longer will respond to shootings because there are too many calls, or a murder, an explosion, fire, or kidnapping. You may say, "That is crazy," but is it? But still important, the city council, along with the police commissioners, need to discuss matters pertinent with neighborhood councils. Otherwise, the good people of LA will have a serious fallout with the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Princess Sykes, to be followed by Arthur Hernandez, Terry Lester, and John Edwards. Ms. Sykes?
Yes, I am Princess Sykes.
Why don't you come up a little bit closer to the mic so that everybody can hear you?
Thank you. To the cabinet of this city council, to friends, senior citizens, and all stakeholders that's concerned, I am evangelist Princess Sykes. I am the president of the Greater Watts-Wilhelbrook Chamber of Commerce. After listening to all of the concerns here, I would just like to say, in the days of old, there was three wise men. Today, there is two wise women. I see the concerned citizens has come from far and near to voice their opinion to this council. Let the council not turn a deaf ear. We support the motion bringing forth today from the two wise women, one being my city councilperson, none other than the lady Janet Hahn. I'm up out of my sick bed to be here today because I had to make a sacrifice because now it's a matter of life and death. I may be too sick to respond to a call. Someone may have a gun at my head. I would just like to add to that motion of the councilperson Hahn and the other wise lady to say, whereas any decisions that's made in the near future must include all stakeholders. I'd like to add another whereas, that whereas no commission should have the authority to take action without involving the city councilpersons, for them to get input from their constituents. So therefore, let it be resolved that the policy brought forth without safety concerns for the popular of this great city and all the ones near be revisit, and all stakeholders have input. We have come from as far as Baldwin Hill, Tarzana, and other places, and to the low valleys of the Greater Watts-Wilhelbrook to support the two wise ladies' motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. We now have, ladies and gentlemen, we now have Mr. Arthur Hernandez, to be followed by Terry Lester and John Edwards.
That's pretty hard act to follow. Well, just like the two wise women that come today before the council, I feel that I'm a wise person from Wilmington. I come to you from the heart of the harbor. I come over here to represent and help and support Janice Hahn because I feel that she's got a good motion. I read in the paper this morning, without any preparation to come forward, I seen an article in the Daily Breeze. It was about two inches or three inches by three inches, and I'm not prepared. But I come forward to bring and support, and I am an ex-businessman in Wilmington. I was ex-vice president of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a past district governor of District 12. The issue today, I feel this is very important for not only for the city of Los Angeles, but the LA County. I used to be a past businessman in Wilmington, and one time I called 911, and I was in trouble. The criminals were breaking down the door of my business in the back, and I called 911, and they came in about 10 minutes. But after I realized what happened, the 911 wasn't for me, it was for the criminal, because after I got through, he needed 911. And this is an issue, this is an issue that I feel is very important for everyone in Los Angeles County, and I think that this is a day for the people to stand up and be counted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We now have Terry Lester.
Good morning, councilpeople.
I called him next, though, so I'll put it right there.
I'm here to represent several homeowner associations in the valley. The residents and businesses that will be directly affected by this have not been adequately notified, nor has there been enough publicity on this very serious matter, a matter of life and death. We emphatically request the city council to make sure to allow time to inform the public and ask a public meeting. We need a chance to review and respond at a public hearing. We support Councilwoman Hahn very strongly, and all of her supporters and the council people that are supporting her movement. I will have more to say on behalf of the homeowners associations that I represent at a future date, if you will allow us to have the hearing. Thank you, councilmembers, for your consideration and concern for your constituents.
Thank you very much. Mr. John Edwards, followed by Deborah Chrishell.
Good morning. My name is John Edwards from the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council. We had a particularly hard fight to be certified, and to be honest, to be here this morning shows me that it was worth it, when you see the power of neighborhood councils in this chamber. We support the motion by councilmembers Hahn and Gru, and I believe there should be other meetings to discuss the real issues of this, because this is not just simply about burglar alarms, but in some ways, it defines the relationship between the police and the citizens of Los Angeles. Very few of the neighborhood councils, it seems, has had time to have a stakeholders' meeting since the news of the police commission. We ourselves will have one next Tuesday, where we will put this on the agenda. And I believe if this meeting was taking place next Wednesday, I could come here and say, as an advisory body, that the Greater Cypress Park Neighborhood Council advises councilmembers Pacheco and Reyes to vote for this. councilmembers Pacheco and Reyes to vote for this motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Ms. Chrishell?
My name is Debbie Chrishell and I'm a resident of Brentwood. In response to the police commission's ruling on the LAPD not responding to security alarms unless there is, quote, "proof of an intrusion" is absolutely ludicrous, not to mention terrifying. While the problems of false alarms going off needs to be addressed, this is not the solution. On a side note, before I get to the major core issue of this, if this ruling goes into effect, you have just made all of the residents, and in particular, the women of Beverly Hills, a much safer place to live. Because as we all know, as do the criminals, that the Beverly Hills Police Department responds to every alarm that goes off. And therefore, any, I'm sorry, so why would any criminal even bother with neighboring Beverly Hills when they have all of L.A. as free rein, i.e., no police are going to show up? This is just one of the major reasons why the citizens of Beverly Hills hold such high regard of their police department and support them. Now, getting to the core and the major issue of this ruling, if this ruling is passed, if this ruling is passed by the L.A. City Council members, all women and children will be in extreme danger of being raped, mutilated, maimed, and murdered, and all in the luxury of their own homes. What a nice convenience for the criminals. Let me just say this again. If this ruling is passed, all women and children of Los Angeles will be in extreme danger of being raped, mutilated, maimed, and/or murdered, all in the luxury of their own homes. I am not concerned with my possessions. Possessions can be replaced. I am concerned, we are talking about concerning our grandmothers, mothers, wives, aunts, nieces, all women. This is a women's issue.
Ms. Chrishell, if I could most respectfully ask you to move towards conclusion, which we still have about 35 speakers to go.
Okay. We're talking about women being violently raped in their own homes for an hour, two hours, five hours, or maybe an entire evening. By passing this, we are telling criminals, "Come on in. The door's open. Don't worry. Nobody's going to show up and stay as long as you like and go ahead and repeatedly rape our women as long as you like." As long as I cannot reach a panic button, you can stay as long as you like because guess what? The LAPD isn't coming. Criminals can go block by block, house by house, and help themselves and ask for anything they want for as long as they want. Is this what you want for your constituents? Are you going to allow this potential for more women to be violently victimized?
Thank you very much for your testimony. I think we do have to move along to the next speaker.
Can I just make a closing remark?
You can just close, yes, please. Thank you.
Can I make a closing remark?
Sure, go ahead.
In closing, a vote in favor of this ruling is a vote not to protect the women of L.A. A vote in opposition is a vote to protect our women, our grandmothers, wives, childrens, nieces, aunts, all women, period. Now it's up to you. We know where the police commission stands on protecting women. Now it's time to show that you care about protecting women from violent crimes, heinous violent crimes against women. That is what is at at stake.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Hahn, Mr. Holden wanted to make a point of personal privilege?
Yeah, a point of personal privilege to the speakers. The hours long, a lot of folks made a lot of other arrangements with their time because there are only 15 items on the agenda that's been done. I respectfully request for those who speak in favor of the motion, should I ever stand and say I support? And we have heard the message from many of you. Otherwise, you might be on the losing side if you do otherwise. And so, Ms. President, I respectfully request that if they were to say, "Take those cards and make them a part of the record," that's fine. And have those in favor of this motion before us today, would you stand, please? All right. Now you can be seated. For those who are opposed to the motion, would you stand, please? Mr. President, would you ask of those individuals who have not spoken yet, they're in favor of the motion, if they would just accept the recommendation that it'd become a part of the record, their cards?
We have a motion for Mr. Holden to cut off debate, but to make sure that names are entered into the record. We have a stack of 15 people who are against the proposal. As I mentioned before, there might have been some misunderstanding among some. If there are any folks that would like to step forward and speak against the proposal before us, that is, that the council assert jurisdiction over this issue, would you please come forward at this time? I do have a stack of cards. If these were filled out incorrectly and it's actually in support of the council proposal to assert jurisdiction, then you can stay seated. Okay, so I'll assume that everybody in that pile filled that out incorrectly. Is there, okay. So these names will all be entered into the record. At this point, we are going to close off the public comment, and I know that many of you didn't get the chance to speak yet. Oh, we have a couple people coming forward. If you would state your name, because we have a big pile of cards and all.
I'm Jackie Sims, one of the co-chairs of Watts Neighborhood Council.
Okay.
I'm Rosemary Lewis, a single mother, U.S. postal worker.
Great.
And I don't think you've heard all of the arguments that this motion, this passage or whatever the commission has done has an effect. We're a battlefront in Watts every day. And you would just, what they're doing is just adding one more battlefront for us to have to deal with.
When you say that there's 15 names, you're saying that we're against what you're...
When you fill out the card, you say for against the proposal. There are ones that said against.
I'm against the proposal, but I want to make sure that I understand what I'm opposing.
Okay. I'll say this one more time to clarify, and then we're going to cut off public debate.
In plain English, please.
Sure. We have a proposal before us. That proposal is for the council to assert jurisdiction over this issue that the police commission decided on. So if you are for that proposal, you want the council to take this under our umbrella, to possibly consider a different action than the police commission. If you are for the proposal...
Okay, but I understand this, though. In short, I am a customer of Brink Security, correct? Now, they sent me a letter saying there's going to be a meeting today, and they're saying that they're not going to send the Los Angeles PD to my home if my alarm goes off unless there's a witness viewing a person breaking into my home. Is that correct? Okay, so what I want to know, if I oppose it, that means...
You're entered in the record. You're for the proposal before you, right now. Okay, so...
Wait, wait, wait. I want to understand this because my brain's not accepting what you're saying.
You're for Ms. Hahn and Ms. Gru's proposal for us to assert jurisdiction over the issue. Okay?
Yes, that's what I want.
Thank you very much.
I want...
Okay, we have, okay, so I'm going to ask you right now to conclude those comments and to step down. But thank you for being here and thank you for entering that support into the record. We do have one card, which is against the proposal, from Mr. Joe Shea. If you'd like to please come forward and to testify, and then we'll be closing off public comment and entering into council consideration of the item. And all of your names will be entered in the record, and we thank everybody for coming down here today to testify and making time in your schedules.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I saw this debate on television and I came down to participate because I want to explain to you that what the police department responds to every year in the form of 125,000 false alarms is the equivalent of our deployment to the Persian Gulf. It takes two men in every one of those 125,000 cars to respond to 125,000 false alarms. We deploy that many people as the taxpayers of the city of Los Angeles, as a businessman in the city of Los Angeles, as a resident of the city of Los Angeles, for no purpose because those alarms were false. And what has happened here is that a group of security guard companies, who often include former chiefs of police, former deputy chiefs of police, who are well represented on our chambers of commerce and well represented on our neighborhood councils, have organized throughout all your council districts to come and threaten you and say, "You're not going to get our support in the next election unless you support answering these 125,000 false alarms." Mr. Reyes, Mr. Pacheco, you live in neighborhoods where sometimes the police are never seen, where false alarms are not heard because people can't afford alarms. And yet, what we're doing here is creating a class of the protected, the protected people who can afford these expensive alarms and who can be assured by their representatives that the police are going to come and respond to them.
Mr. Shea, if I can ask you to conclude respectfully as well.
Mr. Garcetti, coming from a district as poor as your own, I know you have sympathy. But remember, your careers do not hang on this decision, no matter how powerfully the security guard companies have approached you. It is not so important as addressing the vast amount of gang crime, as addressing the rapes, the murders. Now, if you have called 911 anytime recently, you know you're put on hold. And where are our police officers?
Thank you very much, Mr. Shea.
They're answering a false alarm.
We thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, appreciate you coming down. If you'll please, please respect, please be respectful to the speakers in the council chambers, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, before I turn it over to Council President Padilla, there are 48 other cards that were before us. Ma'am, I'm sorry, we have to cut off public comment this time because we're going to need to debate this in the council. There are 48 other cards, all of which has been expressed were for this proposal. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it over to Council President Padilla.
Oh, we have cut it off. Oh, they'll be... Okay. Right here.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. As you mentioned, this concludes public comment on this item. For the time being, I have four members of the council on the queue thus far. Let's begin council discussion and debate with Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I think what we have witnessed today, and as we've heard, there were another 48 people who would like to speak on this issue, is what I am responding to by asking you, my colleagues, to take this decision that the police commission made and look at it more in depth. I believe that we have a new day in Los Angeles. We have new council members. We have a new city charter, and we have close to 60 certified neighborhood councils throughout We not only made a pledge to our constituents, it's a law in the city charter that no commission, no board, our own city council cannot make a decision that impacts our neighborhoods without making sure that our neighborhood councils, which are made up of the stakeholders, which are made up of businesspeople, of homeowners, of renters, of churches, of schools, of nonprofits in a community, we cannot make our decisions anymore without making sure they have plenty of notice so that they may have an opportunity to come to the table and weigh in on the decisions that we make. And in my opinion, there has been no decision that I can think of lately that most directly impacts people where they sleep, in their beds, than this decision to have a blanket policy of non-response to burglar alarms. I am here to say, I think we have problems. I'm not going to defend 92% having false alarms. I will not defend that people actually have alarms without paying their police permits. I will not defend alarm companies who are not taking responsibility and who are not be accountable to the things that we expect for doing business in the city of Los Angeles. But I believe we need to have that debate at another time when everyone who is impacted by this has an opportunity to be at the table. Los Angeles of long ago did not allow people at the table. We made these decisions and then we announced them and people read about them in the newspapers. Things have changed. We cannot allow the police commission, we cannot allow the Harbor Commission, we cannot allow our city council to fall back in an era where we do not bring the stakeholders to the table to weigh in on these decisions. I know many of you support this policy. I know the chief supports this policy. But what I'm asking you today is to respond to the people that we represent. We're not accountable to the alarm companies. We're not accountable to the lobbyists. But we are accountable to the people who say they did not know that this decision was being made, and they're upset that they didn't get to come to the table. I'm only asking you to vote with me on that. Let's assert our jurisdiction. Let's hold this public debate. Let's debate the merits of this policy, and hopefully, we can come to a conclusion that benefits everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members of the council, I have next on the queue Ms. Misakowski, followed by Mr. Burnson, Ms. Gru, Mr. Zion, Mr. Holden, and Mr. Reyes. Ms. Misakowski?
I would like to ask the police department, the police commission representatives, and any other police representatives who are here today to come to the table, first of all, to explain the policy, to explain what the commission did in terms of outreach, in terms of public hearings that they did hold, and in terms of what the status is now of the policy, different from, I think, a very significant impression or misimpression that has been conveyed to the public. Ms. Gunn, Chief McDonald.
Thank you, Councilwoman. First of all, on the notification, the first time the police commission heard this item was in April of 2002. We have had other hearings in December 17th, and we had a hearing on January 7th. All of our agendas were posted on the Los Angeles website. To get to the system, the customers have to go through the neighborhood council portion of the homepage. So we have been out there posting our agendas, and we have had significant representation from the alarm companies at these meetings. Now, what we have done is basically try to ensure that 15% more patrol time is available to work on more serious crime. We've whittled this down to 92% false alarms. It's just not good enough. We have a safe parks program. We have a gang program. We can use those 15% more people in the field to work on real problems, not perceived problems. The other problem we have is that, well, not a problem, but we're going to give better service to the subscribers. Currently, we don't show up until 45 minutes or more to an alarm call. Now, contrary to parade of horrors that have been told at the microphone, none of us have a collective memory of any person being killed, raped, or robbed because of the alarm that went off and we didn't show up. Under the new policy, when it's verified, we will now make that a Code Two High Call, which is high priority. We will be there within 15 minutes. So actually, the subscriber is going to get a better service. We are not going to not respond to alarms, as people in the audience said. We will respond continually to all alarms that are verified. We will respond to panic alarms, panic buttons. None of that has changed. Most of the businesses have been mentioned have panic buttons as well as burglar alarms. When they push that panic button, we will respond. What we're really talking about here is about 96% of the public, 94%, are subsidizing the other 6% by making the police department the responding unit for the alarm companies. That is not acceptable to us. The alarm companies are going to have to take some of their responsibility. Now, this is not a new problem. Now, this is not a new problem. The police department's been trying to do this in the Commission for over 20 years. What happened was councilmembers Browdy and Chick put in a motion back in 1994, which was defeated. After that motion, the alarm companies went to Sacramento and got the law changed that preempted the city of Los Angeles from having any authority over them. So what now, when they come to us with all their proposals on how they're going to solve the problem, we have no authority to correct them if they're not. And consequently, it's self-policing. Well, it's our position in the Commission that they've been self-policing themselves for 20 years, and they haven't done a damn good job about it. We're interested in the safety of the citizens of Los Angeles, the safety of the citizens is not being met by wasting valuable police resources responding to false alarms.
Chief McDonald.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Assistant Chief Jim McDonald from the Police Department. The chief's position on this basically is that when we look at it from strictly a resource allocation perspective, you've got 127,000 dispatch calls for service a year, that's 15% of all police calls for service, and 98 or 95% of those are false. It just doesn't make good sense to continue operating in the manner that we have been.
Councilmember, may I also add that we did a survey for the year 2001. In 2001, we dispatched 123,254 calls for alarms. That resulted in one arrest for the year, and I submit that is a very poor allocation of police resources.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn, I agree with you that we need to get the people who are here today at the table. I don't think that the Commission representatives today let us know that what happens from here. One had the impression, I think as given by the media, that when the Commission passed this policy, overnight, something changed. That's not the case. Overnight, the Commission said, this is our new policy, we now will take six to nine to 10 months to work with the community, with the alarm companies, communicate with everyone as to how we could or should implement this. What does verification mean? Should there be exceptions to verification? Should there be a differentiation between residential burglar alarms or regular alarms in residentially and in businesses as of time of day? Should there be a different priority? All of those things are something that this Commission and this department will tell you yet needs to happen. This policy did not go into effect because the Commission said so. It was a policy direction saying, this shall be the policy, and this is what we will deal with. All of those issues would come back to the Commission, discuss with the neighborhood councils, discuss with the Public Safety Committee, education, neighborhood. Is that right, Mr. Gunn?
That is absolutely correct. We're ready to embark on a public education program and to meet with any community in the city to explain our policy.
So, I believe that that policy, having been adopted as a direction, has not gone into effect, will not go into effect. Let me reiterate the numbers that were just, the statistic that just came out, in 2001, 123,000 calls for alarms dispatched, 97% false. That's hundreds of thousands of patrol time in a black and white that people are going out, and first of all, when they go out, they don't go out when that alarm comes out. In 1999, this department, overwhelmed with those calls, said, we're not going to dispatch as a priority. It's routine, the officers shall get there to clear it when they can, after they've done other priorities. So it takes time from their patrol just to clear it, but it doesn't give people what people believe they are getting right now. It is not a first response, it is not a high priority response. Not only does this police chief, the previous police chief, the three previous police chiefs believe we need this change in the policy, but you talk of the neighborhood councils to your senior lead officers, to your officers in patrol. I think I could ask the Police Protectively to come to the microphone, and they would agree that in representing police officers, police officers don't want to spend their time chasing the false alarm, they want to be out there. They want to be out there at the drop-in centers, at the recreation and parks where we have higher violent crime. They want to be patrolling the business communities on patrol, where they have real, recognized commissions of burglaries. They want to be out there, working with the community advisory groups. It's interesting, the community police advisory boards, which are an earlier generation of our neighborhood councils, focusing just on the police department, the community police advisory boards, those citizens who work directly with the police department, are not here today because they work with the police department, and they understand that this spent time on false alarms belatedly, not high priority, is misspending of time, is not doing what the community police advisory boards want those police departments, those police officers, those police patrols to be doing in their neighborhood. They want them to be stopping in at the recreation and park centers where we have gangs congregating. They want them to be visible in and around and patrolling the neighborhoods where they know crime is occurring, not chasing that false alarm. Again, 127,000, 123,000 alarms that were dispatched, 2% in all of 2001 were not false, and it resulted in one arrest. And that's because even on the ones that aren't false, because they're all relegated to a second or a tertiary call in terms of patrol, they don't get there right away. Let's work with the department, work with the Commission, work with the police officers, work with our neighborhoods, to help devise the system that says when something goes off, that is a priority, like a 911 call, like a panic button, that police arrive because they know it's real, it's legitimate, and they can do some real good, as opposed to clearing a house 45 minutes to two hours later.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, members of the council, obviously, this is a very serious moment in our city history, but basically, when you look at the problem we have, it isn't just what the department is doing and what the Commission has asked for, it's what we haven't done as a city and as a council. We haven't funded the police department with the number of officers they need to do the I mean, I'm sorry, I know, you know, I know this is a fairly new council, most of you, and I've been here, I'm probably to blame as much as anybody else, I'll stand up for that, although I have long advocated zero-based budgeting, where we fund the top priority things the way we should, but we haven't done that. Now, in the meantime, the department is trying to do the best job they can, and if they're not getting good results from their resources, if only 2%, I can understand why they came up with some sort of a policy. However, I think this was totally mismanaged and mishandled. I think the announcement, the way it came out, was almost like an invitation for criminals to attack our homes. Now, let's face it, they're not entirely wrong, and the community's right, they deserve protection, and the department wants to give them the best protection they can, but they have limited resources. So we are facing a critical situation. Now, I think there are other means of addressing this thing. I think it needs to be worked out, I think there's a happy medium, and I'm not sure exactly what that is right now. It might be that we charge a response charge to anybody that has a response, it might be, and that go for additional police, it might be that the company who's responsible for that alarm also pay a fine, a response fee. So whatever it boils down to, it boils down to the fact, the public has got to be protected. Obviously, the current system has not worked well, has not been beneficial, and the public may have felt more reassured, and perhaps it did offer a deterrent to criminals, and that's what scares me, is the fact that the criminals may think the deterrent is gone. So I am going to support Ms. Hahn's motion to take jurisdiction, I'm not saying... Okay? Hear me out, before you start clapping, hear me out. We have got to get, we have got to give the police the support they need. They've got to have the resources, they've got to be able to concentrate their efforts where it does the most good, and the high priority crimes like drugs and murders and things of that nature, and also to protect the public and their homes and their businesses. We have got to find a way to do this, and we're not going to be able to do it here today. We're going to have to make certain commitments, and the public may have to make commitments as well as to how we're going to help fund this protection, because we are not doing it now. So, I'm going to vote to take jurisdiction, I'm not going to vote to overturn, I'm going to propose that we talk about this. The public has been heard today, but I think they need to be heard more. I think that we need to sit down and find a way to try to solve these problems by providing more officers, by providing service to alarm services, maybe there needs to be a refinement of the type of alarms. One of the people who testified said that there was a medical situation, maybe those need to be, by the companies that put them in, need to make sure that they're designated in such a manner so that police and fire and paramedics know. But the answer is not imminent here today, either way.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Chair recognizes Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I second Janice Hahn's motion, because I believe the public has a right to participate in the decision-making process of its government. The Police Commission instituted a major policy change that's going to affect thousands of our residents. I've just been a council member a little over nine months. I've received more letters, calls, emails about this issue than I have anything since I was elected to the city council. I'm voting today yes, and supported and seconded Janice's motion, because this does demand a full public process, and we have a duty to provide that process. And I agree with the police chief and the Commission that we need to cut down, and the intent to cut down on the false alarms. Wholeheartedly agree. You can't listen to those numbers and not agree with that concept, that we need to address the false alarms. There is a reason that it's been debated for a long time, but it's not been debated, as Janice mentioned, in an era in the city that I'm very proud to have neighborhood councils being here today. It is so heartwarming and says to the city of Los Angeles and the rest of this country, we have a participatory process in the city of Los Angeles. Our communities, ideas, and beliefs make a difference, and if you don't believe it, watch this council meeting and see the impact that it has had today. We know that the city community leaders have a right to be heard about this issue, and we've heard numbers that the LAPD says it loses about $11 million per year in responding to false alarms. We also get about $5 to $8 million in fines and permit fees. Now, as we've all talked about, we are going to work closely with the alarm companies, because they're not perfect. Those of you that are here, you have some ways to improve as well. As someone who's had a family business, my family business had three false alarms several years back, my family business got fined for those false alarm fees, and guess what? They changed companies. They worked to make sure, so we need to put the feet to the fire of our security companies as well. But we need to make sure that our families and our seniors and women, I've received more letters from seniors and women who are afraid, who are afraid that we are not going to respond to alarm systems. But it's too important to have this discussion at a single commission meeting or a single city council meeting, for that matter of fact. They deserve an opportunity to participate in this process. One undeniable truth that I have discovered, as I mentioned during my first year as a council member, is that government works best when the people participate. For the past five years, the city has slowly, albeit very slowly, moved away from the close-to-the-vest decision-making process. We now have neighborhood councils, we now have community police advisory boards, area planning commissions, regional council committees, and Mayor Hahn's teamwork, LA.
Ms. Grul.
Yes, I'll close in just one minute. I think that, and just to comment on, I believe that we all agree with the diagnosis of the problem, but we believe that everyone should be part of the prescription to solve that problem. And we also agree, and I understand Councilmember Misakowski's point about we're going to have further dialogue and ordinance, but I do believe it's about putting the cart before the horse. We don't develop a policy before we know its implementation, and I think that is very critical. We need to make sure that we're not just educating people in the next six to nine months, we're having them part of the process. So I seconded Councilmember Hahn's motion, because this issue is too important to be discussed quickly, briefly, without the input of our residents. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and I want to thank the public for appearing today, those of you who drove in from the San Fernando Valley, those of you who traveled from the harbor and other areas of Los Angeles. One thing that I have as experience, I was a police officer in Los Angeles for over 30 years, and I remember the thousands and thousands of false alarm calls I responded to. When my colleague, Councilmember Hahn, asked me to support this going to hearing, I said I would support this going to hearing. But what I believe is that the public has a false sense of protection. The public believes that when that alarm is activated, the police will respond quickly, and they will apprehend the suspect, as we see on television. And I ask you in the audience, how many of you have alarms at your homes? Can I see a show of hands? You people have that false sense of security that they will respond quickly. When a 9/11 call goes out to a police unit, we are nearing 10-minute response time for an emergency call for service in the city of Los Angeles. Over 650 murders last year in the city of Los Angeles. We lead the nation in murders. So I'm concerned about public safety, but I'm also concerned about the false sense of protection that you think you have with the alarm that you have at your residence, that you have at your home. I support the public here, and I support the debate, I support democracy, and that's what this is about. The alarm companies hired a lobbyist to lobby for this. The alarm companies sent out letters to their customers saying, the Police Commission drafted this policy, and now go to the council and plead your case. I too, like my colleagues, inundated with phone calls and emails. What are we doing? The people living in my San Fernando Valley have a lot of alarms. We have a lot of crime in the San Fernando Valley, we have a lot of burglaries in the San Fernando Valley, because burglars go where there is property, where they conceal the television, where they conceal the jewelry. But what really troubles me is how the alarm company has not really policed themselves, and we get to this point of crisis where the people of this community of Los Angeles now look to us to save something that should have been saved a long time ago. And I know the statistics, I know the numbers, but what I believe we need to do is come up with a plan that will work. 6% of the population of Los Angeles has alarms, and that's wonderful. You pay for the alarm, you pay for the monitoring, and you honestly believe, like Beverly Hills, they'll respond within three minutes. We can't get to a call when someone's killing you within 10 minutes. That's the concern that we have to address, that's the concern we have to find a solution to in our city of Los Angeles. So I'll go for the public debate, but I also recognize the thousands and thousands of officers, and I worked Christmas Day, and it was quoted in the LA Times, Christmas Day, I worked in uniform, I'm a reserve officer, and all I did was chase Code 30 calls, they were all false. On Christmas Day, chasing these calls, and when we talk about patrol, you're not on patrol, you're going from one call to another, you're doing the hopscotch, because you want to clear that call and get to the other call, and we get there 45 minutes to an hour later, what purpose are we serving to the public? The panic alarms, the fire alarms, they're altogether different. But when it comes to the false sense of protection that you folks think you have, it's really not there. 45 minutes to an hour to get to a call when your alarm's activated doesn't really serve a purpose. And when you drive down the street and you hear the car alarm blasting, do you pay attention or you just keep driving by? That's what you do, you keep driving by, you don't call the police, you don't stop, you don't look, because we've become so numb to it. The same thing is happening with this situation. So I support taking this to a hearing, but I also want to caution the public, the answer is not responding to every single alarm call, the answer is identifying those that are valid, so our police officers, 9,000, 10,000, 12,000, whatever we have, can do the job of protecting the public of Los Angeles. We are policymakers to make sure that happens for you. Again, I thank you all for attending this morning.
Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, the most political power is being exerted today. You, the people, have the power to influence the members of the council to let us know that somebody here in government made a mistake and they were not listening to you. But today, we heard you, and we are going to, in my vote, take jurisdiction over this matter. Now, it's a problem that needs to be fixed. Obviously, the Police Commission are well-intended, they're good people also, but they didn't hear you. We did. They recognized that the problem was deployment, they had to cut back someplace, they say. But in doing so, unintentionally, they send this signal to the burglars, to those who would rob you, to those who would invade your property, personally at home and in your business, hey, it's okay, we're not coming, they say. Wrong message. I don't think that was intentional, but that's the net effect. I don't think that was intentional, but that's the net effect. Question is, what do we do about it? Mr. Zine, it's a false sense of security, as you say, but any kind of security is better than none at all. So therefore, in order to fix the problem which has been identified by the commission, the problem which you know to be a problem, we have no choice as a member of the council but to take jurisdiction and hear this matter and work it out in detail. I would hope that those who spoke against this by giving us numbers ought to vote for it. Reminds me, it's equivalent, but not the same as the death penalty. And not one person in this chamber would sit back and say, "Yes, let's kill them all if one or two are innocent." And yet, a thousand have been convicted. They wouldn't say that. There's only two that are going to die that shouldn't die, so let's kill them all. You would say, "Oh, no. The system is flawed. Fix it." And the same thing here, ladies and gentlemen. The system is flawed. The evidence is clear. Miss Sikowski read off the numbers. It is flawed. And yes, maybe 98% are false, but the two should be saved, maybe someone is having a problem, as Ruth Glant did, where she pushed the panic button. And what if they didn't show up? She would be dead today. She would not be a member of the city council. Right here at home, one of us, amongst us, we have no choice, Mr. Sikowski, Mr. Zine, Wise, and others, but to follow the lead of the two wise women. Accept the jurisdiction. Boy, yes, and then work this problem out, Mr. President, because I think it can be worked out. The Police Commission is well-intended. We're well-intended. The people know what they need and want and deserve, and we're going to provide it for them.
Chair recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. It's obvious to me that we are speaking as one city, and in that one city, we have many neighborhood councils. And so I support Customer Hahn, Customer Gruel in their effort. What's critical to me, though, is to understand that the chief and the commission, I believe, are understanding what's available to us in terms of resources. Now, where we have to be, I believe, as a body, is to understand what this data means. We talk about deployment, we talk about where the crime is happening, and where do our officers actually work? Where do they respond? But I have a few questions here that I just want to, for the record, understand how it fits into this formula of allocation. When there's an alarm, whether it's false or not, is that recorded as a call for service?
Yes. Lieutenant Deborah Kirk, Commission Investigation Division. The answer is yes.
Okay. So are we deploying our officers based on calls for service?
It is one of the factors in the control group formula, yes.
So it is, we move our resources based on those calls for service?
That's one of the factors, yes.
Okay. And yet, 92% are false, or 94?
Within this factor, yes. It has given us a false reading because of the large amount of false alarms.
So if we have, we have an idea of where the majority of the calls are coming from? Do we have that?
Yes, we do.
Okay. The beauty of this process is that through these committees, it would be enlightening to see where these calls are coming from. We should have a map that shows the public, the neighborhood councils, the council here, where are these calls coming from, and where our officers are allocated, and we should have an overlay that shows where the crimes are occurring and where the people live. And let's understand what we're doing with the city. We have the technology, you have the political will, you have the experience. Why not put together the most effective strategy that underscores what we have, what we don't have, and look at this as one city? It's not about us and them. The tale of two cities has to end. And the only way to end is if we look at this comprehensively. But we must be informed. I remember when the chief came in and he said, "We'll implement systems and data that speaks to how we maximize our technological advances so we can move persons out where they need to be." Let's start now. But let's allow our neighborhood councils to know that if we have to make hard decisions, it's because this is what the picture shows. And I'm not sure if anyone has a clear picture of what is happening in our city. So let's get an understanding. Let's use as an opportunity, let's look at some very clear pictures, and let it tell its tale. And hopefully, it's one of one city. Thank you.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
After you requested?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we, in the committee, a friendly amendment, that we plot out where the calls and services are coming from and where the crime is actually occurring and see it as one city. Second motion.
Okay. Motion in a second.
Yes.
Part of speakers, Mr. Wise.
Thank you, Mr. President. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, Mr. Reyes. And I want to say to the members of the Department and of Chief Braden's new administration, I support what you're doing. I mean, you are trying to tackle the tough issues that have been neglected for so long in the LAPD, so many different issues, this one, prepare us for the new realities of terrorism, do a better job of reforming the department and complying with civil rights. You're tackling the tough issues, and I really respect that and I appreciate that. And I think change is good. What I'm going to do today is I'm going to vote for the motion that is on the floor to permit further debate on this issue, because I think further debate can be beneficial. We've just seen in Mr. Reyes's comments how further debate in this area can move us forward together as a city. But let's be very, very clear here. Chief McDonald, you've set the bar very high. You've told us of hundreds of thousands of service calls. 15% of all service calls that officers go out on are related to alarms, and you've told us of one arrest last year that resulted from those hundreds of thousands of officer minutes and hours. That sets the bar very high. So when the matter comes back here, when it comes to committee, and when it comes back to the floor, for me to vote to overturn what the department has done here will require a policy that makes the city safer, because I think they have put their finger on it. I think you ought to have the opportunity to come up with and build a better mousetrap. But unless you can build a better mousetrap, I think we have to recognize the work that you've done. But I'll say to my friend, Mr. Reyes, I represent a part of town which, relatively speaking, has more burglar alarms and less crime. I want to make sure that what we do in this city is come up with a policy that makes sense for those parts of town that have fewer burglar alarms but more crime. I mean, that's our duty here in the city of Los Angeles and this city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labons.
I call for the question.
Okay. Question has been called. Madam Clerk, please open the roll and the previous question. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That passes. So now, we have two votes to be taken. Members of the public. You all are very happy that that just ended our discussion. We have two votes to take. One is on a meeting motion offered by Mr. Reyes requesting a map or geographical interpretation of some data. And then, second, whether or not that motion passes, we have a vote on Ms. Hahn's motion that's been agendized.
Hahn accepted Mr. Reyes's motion, so we can just take the one vote on the assertion of jurisdiction.
Accepted as a friendly amendment, unless there's an objection. Seeing none, then that is accepted as a friendly amendment. Our first vote, then, is whether or not to assert jurisdiction over the matter. Is that clear? Ms. Zine? Hold it. We'll assert jurisdiction first. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the assertion of jurisdiction. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Superior motion, this. Mr. Holden, I'm calling upon Ms. Hahn now.
Per my motion, I would like to see this go to a joint meeting of public safety and education in neighborhoods.
Okay, so we'll start to agendize that meeting accordingly and be back to the council within 20 days. Seeing no objections, so ordered. Mr. Holden, did you wish to be recognized at this time? Mr. Holden is satisfied for now. Okay, next item.
Mr. President, items three and four were ordinances. Do you wish to reconsider those and vote on them?
Is there a motion for reconsideration of ordinances? Seeing none, let's proceed to the next item.
Item number 10 was held on the desk that was called special for Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I think we'll get a little quiet.
Mr. Holden, if you're not ready, we can... Are you ready for item number 10? We have other visitors attempting to reach the time.
Let me do it from here. Mr. President, members, it's a very joyous occasion, but it's a sad occasion as well because the person we honor posthumously did such a good job, and we wished he could hear what we have to say about him with his own ears, and yet, it may be possible through the divine spirits. But we know that his partner for many years is here and will hear us speak of him in college, and honored this great man for his contribution to the city of Los Angeles as if he were here. For those who believe, he could just well be here, listening. We speaking of Larry R. Airman, joined the city of Los Angeles family on November 26, 1989, as an emergency preparedness coordinator with the Bureau of Sanitation. In 1992, when the Bureau Central Outfall Sewer collapsed, and I was well aware of that, Larry was instrumental in reorganizing the numerous agencies involved and showed how a coordinated response brought about the most efficient resolution and return to normal operation. This is something Mr. Burnson has worked on for years as well. He also recognized that the best emergency response began at the field level and initiated standard emergency management system exercises in 1997 to improve working relationship between the Bureau Field Crew and their counterparts from other bureaus, departments, and agencies. Sportfield response, Larry created a mobile incident command center to establish a sanitation command post at major emergency sites to facilitate communication, response planning, and incident management. Larry also initiated a Bureau Operations Center, which included management-level training. As part of that training, emergency management exercises, or SANEX, have been conducted every year since 1995. Larry facilitated the development of the mobile BOC from concept to construction so that it met the emergency management needs of the Bureau. He was also the first city employee to be recognized by the International Association of Emergency Management as a certified emergency manager. Mr. Burnson will probably be the second. Unfortunately, on May 24, 2001, Larry had to retire from the city's services. Mr. Airman's accomplishments and contribution honors our city. As such, it is fitting and appropriate that the city honor his memory by dedicating the Sanitation Mobile Bureau Operations Center in his name. I therefore move by that the Bureau of Sanitation Mobile Operations Center be renamed the Larry R. Airman Mobile Bureau Operations Center, and that the Bureau of Sanitation be directed to authorize and authorized to immediately install appropriate signage at this facility to reflect the new name, and that is Larry Airman MOC, the Sanitation Mobile Bureau Operations Center. And I'm here to introduce Mr. Airman, and for those of you who want to have a few words to say, I'm sure you will. Just stand with me and recognize him.
Chair recognizes Mr. Labons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, Larry Airman was an absolutely wonderful, wonderful city employee, and Councilman Holden, those are very nice words that you spoke of, Larry. The great thing about our city is that Larry took an initiative that he loved and had the ability to bring people together and really focus on the issue of disaster preparedness in such a critical area of public works. I know we always first think of the fire department, God bless the fire department and the police department, and water and power, but what about all those sewer lines? What about all those challenges and those gases and all the other things that would happen in the event of an emergency? Larry was the one who stepped up and went all the way around the bases and got everything done. I'm proud to personally have worked with him, proud to personally have known him and known him from the neighborhood of Silver Lake, proud that he went to John Watson High School by alma mater, and that we both share, and proud that Mr. Holden came up with the idea that I was able to second to honor Larry Airman and his memory and now forever be known. And then there'll be another employee one day, 10 years from now, who will walk into that emergency center and say, "Well, who is Larry Airman?" And someone will tell him the story, and it will trip an idea of that employee to do something greater and grander to help all people. That's the beauty of it. Congratulations. Sorry about Larry not being here, but I know he's looking down, plotting our ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I want to thank Nate for bringing this in. This is a very significant and appropriate action. First of all, those of us that have worked with him recognize the dedication that he had to the safety of this city and to the people of Los Angeles. And, you know, a lot of people don't recognize the fact that when you have a major catastrophe, it isn't just police and fire, as Mr. Labons mentioned. Those of us that were here for the North Street earthquake recovery, we know that we had to get the streets cleared so the people could even respond to emergency things and to repairs, the sewers, the water pipes, and things of that nature. And the communications, obviously, were extremely important. So I think this is a very fitting dedication. I want to express my sympathy for your loss, and I also want to thank you for the work that he did for this city and the dedication. Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Mr. Holden, so conclude.
Mr. President, members, the suitable copy of this resolution will be presented to this Airman.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Unanimous approval. Next item, please.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. The council calls forward at this time Mr. Mort Allen, followed by Alma Ramirez and Carolyn Moore.
To five minutes. Actually, I came down here on Friday, but due to unfortunate circumstances, I held off, so this is... I had hoped this year to kind of stay home and enjoy myself and not be so involved, but I don't know how many of you know that the number-one TV night for most television stations is Thursday because the majority of the valley, I know, watches Channel 35 on Tuesday and Wednesday nights and Friday nights. And it's kind of a monitoring piece, and I got a lot of phone calls about what happened the last Wednesday session. And I just want to bring it up for all of you people, just so you know what it sounds like to the public. You've got a lot of great city employees here that have been here a lot of years, one of which is Chris Westhoff, who's been with the city attorney and the public works for 30 years that I know of. And when members of the council start attacking these people on issues, it's just, it looks so bad on the public because these are the people that the public needs. And we were talking about the stormwater thing, and I don't know how many of you know the story behind the stormwater in Los Angeles. And this is what's important. There was three major government things against the city for the stormwater. There was the settlement in 87 with the EPA, there was a 1990 settlement with the Regional Water Quality Board, and a 1990 settlement with the county, which required education. And one of our local companies, Clear Channel Advertising, who I no longer represent, but they donated a million and a half dollars worth of billboards in 1993 that said, "Don't put stuff in the storm drain." And that was the settlement of the whole thing, okay? Which the city would have had to pay a million and a half dollars if they hadn't donated it. Okay? Now, let's fast forward. You all know that we have this new billboard laws, which are unconstitutional because it regulates content and all that. So the bottom line is, after everything these companies did, and if you saw in the paper, we had a lease all signed with Clear Channel to move their Western operations to the Galleria in Sherman Oaks. And it was a... The lease was a $45 million lease. They tore it up two weeks ago and turned around and signed a lease in Burbank because they said they wouldn't do business with the city of L.A. anymore because of what happened with the... They didn't care about the regulations. They cared that you guys passed a law that was unconstitutional.
Madame Clerk, I'll just conclude.
Okay, so anyway, so all I'm saying is, please understand that everybody does watch television, and we need to treat our city employees a little more respect. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Alma Ramirez, followed by Carolyn Moore.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Alma Ramirez, and the biggest problem that I've encountered is having lived in a short time in the city of Pataramas City, which is a completely horrible city and completely dilapidated. My main concern as a Mexican muckraker is to take on the problems that are affecting many of the Mexicans. We are major... Right now at the moment, we are tackling one major slumlord. His name is Jack... Excuse me, his name is Henry Wise. And my question to the councilmembers is, is Henry Wise, Slumlord Henry Wise, related to Councilman Jack Wise of Sherman Oaks? Is Henry Wise, Slumlord Henry Wise, related to Councilman Jack Wise?
Okay.
No? How about Attorney Ronald Wise? It is a good question, okay? And I didn't want any problems or any leverage or any protection coming from the city council members to these slumlords. Anyway, I am not making a profit from what I am doing. I am taking on many of the dilapidated slumlord conditions in Pataramas City and all the cities in L.A. I am also exposing several of the slumlords, such as Henry Wise and Attorney Ronald Wise, who is representing him.
If I can ask you to conclude, do you have a similar division within the city attorney's office? I'm sure we can get someone to help you.
Okay. By the way, I just want to let you know that, again, we've called the Devonshire Police for protection. We've not been able to get any kind of protection from the Devonshire Police Department. We've not been able to get any protection or assistance from the Housing Department, nor from the Health Department, nor from the city attorney's office, and nor from the Venice Courthouse. So again, it seems like I'm going against the wall and I'm being basically blackballed because I'm taking on these mega, mega slumlords.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Carolyn Moore? Ms. Moore, are you still with us? If not, then this concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madame Clerk, next order for business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Wednesday, April 16th, for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Zine is excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused for city business Friday, January 24th. That also meets council policy.
Ms. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, January 15th, to leave at noon. A motion is required, and that's for city business.
Ms. Pacheco moves. Ms. Perry is excused.
And Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused for personal business on Tuesdays, January 21st and 28th, February 4th, 11th, 18th, and 25th, and March 4th. A motion is required for the January 21st excuse.
Ms. Reyes moves. Ms. Pacheco is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Members, are there any announcements today? Announcements? If not, please rise for adjourning motions. Adjourning motions. Chair recognizes Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, these are two old dear friends. One is Horace D. Hart. Passed away a couple of years ago, but I've just been notified, and I think it's appropriate that we adjourn in his memory. He was born October 14, 1927, in Albany, Georgia. Grew up in Macon, Georgia, after he stayed in the United States Army. Returned to school and earned a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in education. Mr. Hart's career was in the field of education. He was a teacher, school counselor, and he was a principal. During his retirement years, Mr. Hart was very busy. He was a vista volunteer and was the finance officer for the Union Baptist Missionary Association. Horace was also very active in his fraternity and other social organizations, survived by his wife for 49 years, Cheryl, his daughter, granddaughter, and many other relatives. Also in that area, and, Mr. President, members, we have John Harvey. Mr. Harvey was born in Richmond, North Carolina. He grew up in Newt, New Jersey. I knew him then. As a young man, he proudly served his country, the United States Navy. Later in life, he began several lucrative businesses in the greater Newark, New Jersey area. For his retirement years, John and his wife Jane decided to move to the South, to settle in Macon, Georgia, where he was an active member of his church, serving as a trustee. Mr. Harvey was 76 years old at the time of his passing. And both of these two gentlemen, Mr. President, members, will be missed, for they did great work while they were here on the planet Earth.
Mr. Labons?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Wilbert Anderson, who lived to be 70 years old. It was very special to me. He was my coach in college at Los Angeles City College. He was all-state at Westinghouse High School in Pennsylvania, but none of the Big Ten schools wanted him. So he came out west to Compton College and played football for Compton College, later transferred to UCLA, was a member of the 1954 National Championship Bruin Football Team. He received his bachelor's degree, his master's degree, and his doctorate degree from UCLA in kinesiology. For over 30 years, he was an educator at Los Angeles City College, as well as a football coach. He was also a scout for the New England Patriots for 25 years. He did not have any children, but he also took care of his sister, who tragically had diabetes and was without limbs of her legs, but for many, many years, took care of her sister, his whole end of his... Towards his life in their home here in Los Angeles. Wilbert Anderson was a wonderful man who will be missed and special to Los Angeles City College. Also, members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Edward P. Scanlon. He was a great priest for the archdiocese of Los Angeles for many years. He lived to be 81 years old. He was the first person that I gave, that I can remember, that I gave pumpkin butter to in 1972 because he was counseling me through a little crisis that we have. And I remember the cold night on Vermont Avenue and knocking on the rectory door and Father Scanlon answering the door. Later on in years, when I assumed my position here, I was helping counsel him as he transferred from an active priest to that of an educator in Los Angeles and lived in the Antwater District and Mr. Garcetti's district, right on Silver Lake Boulevard there, and was a counselor for adult education. He then retired in Ojai to be with fellow priests, and he lived out his retirement years, unfortunately, with some illness. But I remember, too, going to church and him preaching, and this was to the time of Vietnam and the time of a lot of strife in our country, and he really talked. And for those of... Sometimes we... He sent a great message, not just a religious message or a faith message, which one has a choice to accept or not, but also a community message. He was one of the first priests that I remember talking real about issues in the streets and issues in the community and issues in the country. Edward P. Scanlon touched many, many people. His services are today in Ojai. He will be buried at Holy Cross Cemetery in West Los Angeles, originally from New York. And his brother preceded him in death, but Edward P. Scanlon, a member of the Los Feliz community, our motherhood council church in the late 60s and 70s, so we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Labons. Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you. I'd like to have the council adjourn in memory of William H. Schoenfeld, who was a renowned L.A. airport architect. He was a former deputy executive of L.A. World Airports, who served from 1970 until his retirement in 1994 as its chief architectural, planning, and engineering officer. He supervised the transformation in the late 70s and early 80s of the L.A. International Airport into the new LAX. That reconstruction program included the building of the Tom Bradley International Terminal, the domestic terminals for the second levels, additional cargo area, and this complex design earned him the Distinguished Community Service Award from the Institute for the Advancement of Engineering in 1989. According to Lydia Kennard, she said for more than three decades, he devoted his professional life to ensuring Los Angeles had the optimum infrastructure to handle an unprecedented increase in air passenger demand. He was a graduate of the USC School of Architecture, had worked privately with the Charles Luckman Associates, from which he then came to LAX. He served during that time on federal commissions, including the NASA Research and Technology Advisory Committee, and the National Transportation Research Board, and the National Research Council of the National Academies of Science and Engineering. He is survived by his wife Sylvia and daughter Allison Shawk.
Ms. Pacheco.
Colleagues, Council President, colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of one of my constituents, Richard Stephen Huddelson. He was an architect who was very well-known for having a big heart and for lending a helping hand to others. He passed away on December 10 of this past year, survived by his spouse Sue Huddelson and their children Julia and Gay. I ask that we adjourn in memory of...
Mr. Huddelson. Mr. Reyes.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Jose Wadalupe Vaca. He was born on January 13, 1933, in San Cuente Jalisco, Mexico. He's a longtime resident of Cypress Park. Mr. Vaca passed away on December 28, 2002. He was to have celebrated his 70th birthday this past Monday. Youngest of five sons, Mr. Vaca first came to this country in 1959 at the age of 26, and eventually married his wife of 36 years, Maria Delotes. Mr. Vaca, along with his wife, were tremendously involved in the local parish, Divine Savior in Cypress Park, where he was the founder and active member of the nocturnal adoration, as well as the holy hour first Fridays. He was also a Eucharist minister for the church, which he often paid home visits to sick and ill members of the congregation. A wonderful man whom I knew personally. He served along with my mom in providing the Eucharist for those who are ill and bedridden. He was a very energetic person, a very positive person, always bright in his point of view about life, who will be sorely missed. He has cared for the large Cypress Park community and has demonstrated at the standing-room-only church on the day of his services. He was survived by five children, Andres, Daniel, Elias, Martha, and Gabriel. Martha is part of our city family, works for Public Works, very active in the community in our graffiti and doing a lot of the community improvement work. They have five grandchildren, Alejandro, Isaiah, Andres, and Anthony. His first granddaughter was born on Christmas Day and three days before his own passing. So he always wanted to have a granddaughter, and that did come to pass. When I met him, he was always very active. He was always making sure the church was ready. He put the curtains up on the altar and did all the things that keep the church going, so we'll definitely miss. And it'll be hard to replace the person who had provided so much energy to our church. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jose Arroyo, born in 1920 and a longtime resident of Mission Hills in the San Fernando Valley. He served in the United States Marine Corps as a sailor during World War II, as well as a medic and other assignments, and was stationed in Japan. He was a great husband, father, and grandfather, very involved in the San Fernando Little League, Baseball League, and will always be remembered for his sense of humor. He lived a long and prosperous life and will be missed by his friends and family. May he rest in peace.
Madame Clerk, would you please call the roll? Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.